Before being present at the special town meeting, we all please stand and watch your feet. I am the chairman of the United States Department of Public Affairs, on Asian, under God, and ready to go. Thank you very much. I've been advised by the law that the warrant that the department served and by the selectmen staff has probably been jeopardized. Hello. Can you turn off the mic a little bit? Hello. There are going to be some bugs. We'll get them. Okay. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the formal reading of the warrant. Move. Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second in all those who favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted, declared unanimous. I have nominated Peter Toppin as assistant moderator for this meeting and entertain a motion to appoint him. Move seconded. Move in second at discussion, there being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted, declared unanimous. Would the assistant moderator of the following tellers please stand and be sworn by the town clerk? And Madam Clerk, may I care to read the rules?
Good evening, everybody. I have Susan Frankel, Chris Muraki, Kenny Scott-Plikes, Allison Shore, Jack Manning, Ivy Amara, and Peter Toppin. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you are parties and members of the county's and government of my youth this evening? Thank you.
Thank you, tellers and deputy moderators for people who serve. Recognize dignitaries. I don't see any dignified people here, so we'll pass over that. I'd ask the chairman of the advisory committee, Lincoln Heineman, to introduce his board members.
I'm Lincoln Heineman, chair of the advisory committee. Mark Sanden is the vice chair. Jamie Gilmore is our chair of merits. Sean Delacy, Jerry Kelly, Patrice Metro, Anthony Antoniello, and unable to be here due to engagements while on business are Jeff Burns and Mike Wester.
Thanks, man. I'd ask the chairman of the board of selectmen, Mara Karen, to introduce her board, as well as a special guest.
I'm a little shorter than the moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. I'd like to address school committee advisory board. Welcome to special town meeting. I'd like to introduce the board of selectmen, vice chair Anthony Bagnani, clerk John Dennehy, our newest member Karen Campfield, and also at the table with us this evening is our attorney counsel Cindy Yamara, Al Banger, acting town administrator, and our finance director Nancy Holt. And it's my pleasure just to give those of you a little bit of an update. As you know, Patricia Vincasey, who was our town administrator for eight years, resigned in September. We are all very grateful and thankful to the dedication that she gave to the town of Situ for the past eight years. The board would like to thank Al, Nancy, and the rest of the department heads and all of the staff for all the dedication and hard work that you've done during this transition. And we want to also have a special welcome and introduce you to our new town administrator, Jim Gaudreau, who is over here down to your left. We are excited to have Jim join us. He joins us with 22 years of experience as a town administrator, most recently and currently in the town of Lynnfield. Jim is a resident of Norwell, so he's close by, and he will start officially on January 2nd. So welcome, Jim, and thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to ask the chairman of the school committee, Michael Long, to introduce the board members and the superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Long, and I'm the chairperson of the school committee. Also here tonight are Janice Lindblom and Richard Eber, Mike Hayes, and Peter Gates from out of Kent tonight. Also in attendance is Superintendent Ron Griffin and Director of Business and Finance, Paul Donnell.
All right. Announcements. We've had some dedicated town employees and volunteers pass since our last gathering. Lawrence Jenkins of the DPW died on May 1st, 2017. Bob Tarantino, Veterans Advisory Council Commission on Disabilities, died on June 23rd, 2017. Ralph Roberts, so many of these new, June 25th, 2017. Frank Lynch, Board of Appeals and Board of Health, July 12th, 2017. Paul Crowley, July 26th, 2017, dedicated volunteer of the town archives. Bob McHugh Senior, July 26th, 2017. He was on the Veterans Advisory Council. John Brown, as most of us knew him, Buck, August 16th, 2017. Brother Buck was on the Water Commission from 1953 to 1964. Situitet, he was the Situitet Highway Supervisor, 1970 to 1986. And Thomas Goddard, one of the firefighters, died on October 3rd, 2017. Ask for a moment of silence in commemoration of their passing. Thank you, and thank you to all of them for what they gave to us. My name is Richard Bowen. I'm the town moderator. Moderator chairs the meeting and decides questions of order. I don't vote on articles. Please, I'll be take a couple of minutes just to explain the rules. The town of Situ has two branches of government. The executive branch is personified by our board of selectmen and our school committee, and the legislative branch of government, that's you, town meeting. You are citizen legislators. The town meeting is a place for deliberation and careful decision. The executive branch boards present requests to you for your consideration and enroll as legislators. Those requests take the form of the articles that are on the warrant. The purpose of this meeting is to allow you, the citizen legislators, to review those executive branch requests, to ask questions of the members of the executive branch, and then act upon the requests as you see fit. You each have a very important friend in your work, that being the advisory committee. The advisory committee is your board. It is the standing branch of town meeting that meets year-round and continues during that time period to examine executive branch budgets and requests. The advisory committee works hard, serving as your watchdog, and it will make recommendations to you about each of the articles that are presented tonight to your consideration. You should pay close attention to their reports. Like any legislative body, we operate under certain procedural rules. These rules derive from state law, the parliamentary manual town meeting time, the charter of the bylaws, and custom. And we have hundreds of years of custom to draw from as we conduct our meetings. Here is a brief summary of the rules. All non-voters, except for professional consultants advising town boards, must sit in a non-voter section, which is on the left side of the center rear section. The persons sitting in that section, thank you for the wave, are wearing nice green badges so you can spot them for the aliens that they are. Hello, thank you for coming. Ordinarily, only registered voters may address the meeting. However, I will assume the consent of the meeting to allow any non-registered voter to address you unless I hear an objection from the meeting. Persons wishing to address the meeting must, each time rising to speak, identify themselves to the meeting by name and address. This is a traditional courtesy that I enforce. The reason why I enforce it strictly is because we take minutes at these meetings, and in some future days, someone might be interested, who made that great comment? So every time you get up and make that great comment, or even maybe a not-so-great comment, please begin by identifying who you are and where you live. Speakers representing a board, a community group, or a client should state that relationship to the meeting so that everyone is clear about the status in which you are addressing people. Now, when you go to speak, we have board members who will be speaking from up here. Michael, your board can come up here and speak, or that might be whichever experience. This is new for us, too, so we're just trying to get a feel for the pool. We have two mics right there. We have a mic back there, and... Okay, yes, we have a middle roving mic. It will help me, if you can, when you go to speak, if you will line up at these front two mics, because it just makes it easier for me to keep track of who gets to speak next. I do try to recognize people in the order that they come forward. It's not always easy. I know, I apologize in advance because sometimes I'll accidentally pass over somebody. You can make it easier if you just line up at these front ones. But there are... So if you are an article sponsor, make your motion before you make your speech. Otherwise, I'll rule you out of order. After making a motion, an article sponsor will be allowed up to 10 minutes for a presentation. Sponsors of resolutions, and I don't think we have any tonight, will be allowed five minutes. All motions must be seconded, and no motion is in order until it has been seconded. I've discussed the microphone arrangement. Only after I recognize you may any member address the meeting. Shouting out from the floor, or speaking from tables, or speaking without recognition shows disrespect to your fellow members. Personally, I don't care, but it creates a sense of chaos, and what you have to say is important, so just wait to be recognized. Don't call out. Line up, you'll get your say, and probably will be given more credit, and your presentation will have more weight for following the rules. But try to do it if you can. Speakers from the floor are allowed five minutes on the first round of discussion on an article, and three minutes on the second one. This is an anti-filibuster rule, so five and three. I will not recognize, as per our bylaws, anyone who is speaking for the second time on an article until every other person who has not yet spoken has been recognized. So if you come up with an extra thought, fine, get in line, but if there's a bunch of people who haven't spoken yet, they'll be heard before you get your supplement. Speakers, please confine your remarks and motion on the floor. Address only matters of general interest, not matters of particular interest or personal interest. And kindly don't attack the motives of any member at the meeting. We're all here in good faith. We're all here as brothers and sisters, as neighbors, trying to do the town's business. Treat everyone with respect, with the respect that you would want to treat them. You may ask questions of any town official through the moderator. This isn't one of those TV shows where you get, where the host interrogates the person who's at the other end of the table. You have to pose your question to me, and then, for example, if you want to hear from an official to get an answer, you can say, "Well, I'd like to hear from such-and-such board of why that plot vote was there." At that point, the board can ask one of its members to come forward, or it can decide not to send someone forward. Neither I nor any member of this meeting can allow any elected official to come forward and speak. Should you tire of debate, as I like to say, you can sit in silence and suffer, or you can spring up to the microphone and make that most beloved of all parliamentary motions, "I move the question." Little trick. Don't come up, give your speech, and then say, "I move the question." No, that's not quite fair. And so I won't let you do that. I'll say, "Nice try. If you want to move a question, get the person behind you to do it, or get back in the line, and when you get back up, you can do it." So if you want to move a question, just get up and say, "I move the question." Once it's seconded, we'll take a vote, two-thirds vote, and passes, that cuts off debate, and then we proceed to a vote to make the question. Point of order relates only to questions of procedure and is not a mechanism for prolonging debate. Also, sometimes one hears, "Point of information." Well, guess what? There's no such thing as a point of information. Point of information is just a fancy, or maybe convoluted way of trying to prolong debate by asking a question. Do your question, ask it when you've got the mind. No points of information. You'll be able to rule out a rule. On voice votes, I listen to hear when the motion passes or fails. My hearing's pretty good. So far, knock on wood, I don't think I've missed one. But the day is coming, I'm sure, and if anyone questions my declaration, if seven or more voters rise, I'll ask for a teller to count the vote. Tellers will only count those who are in their seats and in the voting sections. Pursuant to section 20, 2,150G of the bylaws, the moderator may declare two-thirds votes on a declaration. The moderator's declaration is a meaningful question. If seven or more voters move, we will take it count. Please turn off your cell phones or put them in a silent mode. And honorary resolutions, nonreports, I haven't heard about any. All right, let's go. Sorry for the long... Article 1. On the motion, chairman of the board of selectmen, Mr. Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $191.76 from the town clerk's FY 2018 purchase of services expense line item, $13.75 from the FY 2018 assessors' purchase of services line item, and $70 from the full year 2018 Community Preservation Act administrative expenses for the purpose of paying fiscal year 2016 and 2017 unpaid bills.
The move is seconded in discussion. Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article covers some basic housekeeping rules. There were three unpaid bills for fiscal year 2017 that came through after their fiscal year closed. The amount being requested is to pay for these outstanding bills. The biggest portion of $191 was really just for the repair of the automated date stamp on the town clerk's office. The board of selectmen vote unanimously in support and recommends approval of this motion.
The advisory committee, Mr. Heineman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening again. The, as Selectman Kern mentioned, is a routine article that comes before most fall town meetings, and the advisory committee recommends approval unanimous.
Discussion from the floor, there being no one standing at the mics. By the way, for me, the mics are in a different place, so if it looks like I'm about to rush through, there being no one standing at the mics, then maybe somebody is. Wave your hand, shout. Don't throw the galatge, if you want to get a break. But there being no one standing at the mics, this requires a nine-tenths vote for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted, and declared unanimous. Article 2, on the motion, chairman of the board of selectmen, Mark Kern.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from FY 2018 tax levy the sum of $60,000 to transfer to the street lighting account and transfer from water enterprise retained earnings the sum of $60,000 for transfer to the water enterprise technical services account for the purpose of balancing the fiscal year 2018 operating budget pursuant to articles four and nine of the April 26, 2017 annual town meeting warrant.
Move seconded in discussion. Chairman Kern.
Thank you. This motion is to address two outstanding payments and issues that came before us. In 2018, during the budget time, we reduced the amount that we needed to pay for our streetlights due to the installation of LED lights. The amount due was from national grid has lagged behind, so we need to move the $60,000 over into the street lighting account to make our budget whole. The second piece of this is for... To pay for the engineering and contracting of services to design and prepare to design to replace our chemical tanks in the water department. This issue will be coming before the capital planning board for annual town meeting. However, we need to allocate $60,000 to address this project, as the project includes the installation of three new tanks, and the full cost of the chemical tank replacements will be added to the upcoming capital plan. The transfer funds from our water enterprise retained earnings is necessary to begin this design and engineering so we can replace those tanks. The board of selectmen unanimously supports and recommends approval of this article.
From the advisory committee, Patrice Metro.
Thank you. This routine article, at each fall meeting to rebalance the budget, this article seeks to transfer money from available funds in the treasury in order to balance the fiscal year 18 budget. The street lighting account had been reduced in the fiscal year 18 budget because the town purchased streetlights and converted the lights to LED through the ESCO project. Although the utility has retroactively applied credit for the change to the rent, it has yet to apply the credit for the LED conversion. The budget needs to be increased to cover the cost until the credit is received. The funding for this item will come from the available levy limit that the town did not appropriate at the April annual town meeting. After the April 2017 annual town meeting, a leak was discovered at the water treatment plant behind one of the large chemical holding tanks. Evaluation is determined that the tanks cannot be repaired. A masonry wall needs to be removed for replacement of the tanks, and therefore, design and engineering of the holding tanks is required first. This process will provide a scope of work and estimate of the construction costs needed for the inclusion in the capital plan for consideration this spring. The funding for this item will come from the water enterprise retained earnings. The advisory committee recommends approval unanimous.
Discussion. Anyone of the mics surveying, no one of the mics passage. This motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article 3, on the motion, Selectman Chairman Kern.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the transfer of Widows Walk Enterprise Fund receipts into the Widows Walk Capitalization Stabilization Fund as authorized by the vote taken as Article 3 of the April 26, 2017 town meeting by reducing the amount from $185,000 to $15,000.
Move seconded in discussion. Chairman Kern.
Due to the unforeseen impacts from the 2016 drought, the revenues of Widows Walk Country Club did not meet our expectations, and we have a shortfall of $135,000 at the end of fiscal 2017 that we need to cover. We have also experienced a shortfall in revenues due to a new lease being signed by the restaurant owners, where they paid a significant amount of the lease upfront in fiscal year 2017, which has impacted us from balancing this line by $35,000. So we are asking to take out of capital stabilization for the golf club, back into the enterprise fund, $170,000 to cover these expenses to make us whole for fiscal year 2017. The board of selectmen unanimously supports recommendation of this motion.
From the advisory committee, Mark Sanden.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think this article was of its all in good intentions of setting aside the $185,000. As Selectman Kern had mentioned, last year was a tough year between the drought and fall off of revenue. The original plan to set aside the $185 looked a little bit too aggressive, so we're backing that down, make it $15,000. As of the end of the year, the current, as of July 1, the current deficit right now in the account is actually $135,134. Anyway, by going through and reallocating this instead of $185 down to $15, it'll help us cover that deficit due to the reduced revenue expectation. The advisory committee recommended approval of the motion and voted six to zero unanimously in support of this. Thank you.
Lady at the right rear mic.
Yes, thank you. Mary O'Grichloss, 50-man lot row. For those of us who are really well-versed in town finance mechanisms, can you please explain whether any of these golf course funds are from taxpayer funds? I think I asked a similar question at the last town meeting. It was told that they weren't, but if you can just confirm that, then... Ms. Moderator? Sure. No, they're not. It's the Golf Enterprise Fund, which is all from revenue generated from the golf course itself. Okay, thank you.
There being no one else at the mics passage, this motion requires a two-thirds vote. For adoption, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared a two-thirds vote. Any seven persons in which you challenge my determination may stand now. No one is standing. Article 4. Selectman Chairman Kern.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $75,000 for the cyclical revaluation of property.
Move seconded in discussion. Chairman Kern.
This amount is being requested to begin the RFP process for the 2019 Assessor's Property Revaluation. The last evaluation occurred in fiscal 2015. The next assessment is due in 2019. This request is to fund the scope and services necessary to complete this process. The board of selectmen unanimously voted in favor in this and recommends approval of this motion.
From the advisory committee, Mr. General Counsel.
This Article 4 is a housekeeping article to set aside funds for the Assessor's required revaluation of the town as required by the State Department of Revenue every four years. The funding for the article would be from free cash. This was unanimously voted by the advisory committee.
Discussion from the floor, there being no one at the mics passage, this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. Article 5, on the motion, Selectman Chairman Kern.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to rescind the balance of funds authorized but unexpended from prior community preservation projects totaling $273,319.55 and transfer said funds into the Community Preservation Committee Reserve or General Fund Balance from which they were originally appropriated, as the case may be, in accordance with the Community Preservation Act as follows. The Crosby Land Acquisition for Annual Town Meeting Authorization from 2011 for the amount of $216,787.05. The Higgins-McAllister Land Acquisition, Annual Town Meeting 2012, for the amount of $2,000. Bates Lane Parking Project, Annual Town Meeting Authorization of 2012, $43,500.50. And the Damon Preserve Acquisition of 2014 for $11,032.
The move is for second. Move in seconded in discussion. Chairman Kern.
Thank you. These balances listed here have all been reviewed by the Community Preservation Committee, as well as all the project managers for these specific projects listed. It has been determined that these projects are closed, and any listed balances will be returned to that exact same line within the CPC for future projects to come before you. The board of selectmen supports this article, being unanimously voted in favor and recommends approval of this motion.
From the advisory committee, Jamie Gilmore. From the Advisory Committee, Jamie Gilmore.
Good evening, everybody. This is proper accounting to return these funds for excess money not used on projects. The Advisory Committee voted unanimously in favor.
Discussion from the floor. There being no one of the mic's passage, this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared as unanimous. Article Six on the motion. Selectman John Danny.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for taking some time out to do the town's business. Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to act on recommendations from the Community Preservation Committee, CPC, to appropriate the sums of money as indicated as presented at the town meeting. Appropriations for the items below are to be expended first from any existing reserves for the purposes of such item with any excess to be appropriated from the community preservation unreserved funds. All such sums appropriated are further to be expended subject to all terms and conditions of the applications regarding such projects filed with the CPC and the votes of the CPC regarding approval of such items. First, $197,814.50 from community housing for Central Park Housing Window Replacement. Second, $79,850.50 from unreserved funds for the Central Park Housing Window Replacement. Third, $528,500 from open space for parking and access to CPC acquired land. Fourth, $38,490 for open space for mapping, trails, and signage for CPC and town conservation. The move and second discussion Selectman. Thank you. Folks, with respect to the first two that I mentioned, the window replacement, the first one is for approximately $198,000. Both the first one and the second relate to window replacement at Central Park. I'm going to defer for most of the comments to the Chairman of the Housing Authority for any detailed questions, but about a year ago, we had actually done the first phase utilizing about $130,000 to replace, I guess, the first level of Central Park windows. They ran into some obstacles, unforeseen issues with resulting in asbestos abatement. So consequently, they've come back for more funds in order to complete the first phase as well as to complete the second phase. That's the first two. The third one, which is for $528,000, deals with parking in the various open space recreational areas that we have in town. If you haven't received one of these flyers that was handed out, I wish you had, maybe you could look on with maybe your neighbor. If you look at it, you'll notice that there are approximately seven areas across town that we have for recreation trail network sites. Two of which you probably know about first and foremost would be the Driftway. You'll notice when you come down the Driftway across from the Widow's Walk Golf Course is a parking area. You're able to go in and use it. Other people are well aware of the Ellis property, which again, you have a parking area to be able to access conservation land and land that's under the town. There are other areas, one in the Sittitua called the Hubble Park, although there is no access to it just yet. It's up off of Indian Trail and Water Street. But the areas that the CPC is looking to have four basic parking areas that are accessible are located in the west end and are related to four various properties. The first property is the Higgins McAllister. Now, that's off of Booth Hill and also Holly Crest. They're looking to put a trail, not a trail, but a parking area that's going to be accessible, not just for people in general, but people with disabilities. The other areas on the Damon property, you might remember, we just purchased that property about four years ago, actually, three years ago, 2014. The third one is off Bates Lane as like the center. If you look for all of the area that we've purchased, not just for conservation through CPC, but also town on the land, that's an epic city. And then the final one is what's called the Crosby property. Also, you might have heard of terms of Appleton Farm. This is the area that's closest on the, I think it's Summer Street, as you're heading off of Platte Road. This one is an expensive one proposition because you have to go a great deal of land, approximately 1,500 feet, and you're going to have to go over some wetlands in order to get to the area. In order to go over wetlands and afford that, you're going to have to replicate twice that amount. So there's going to be some significant building on that. That's what those projects are for, in order to open up for not just people who normally get there, but people with disabilities or people who are able to park and have the ability for some two accessible trails that they have also. The fourth one and final one deals with the trail map. Obviously, you have all this land. We have over 380 acres that were purchased through the CPC to the $2.6 million. In addition to the 300 acres that's owned by the town, that's not a part of conservation, the town owns. So these parking areas are going to create a linkage, if you will, throughout the area where we're walking all through. And so if you're going to walk through these trails, you kind of need to have a trail map to identify where we're going, as well as being able to have some GPS areas to be able to kind of say, on your iPhone, getting more technology, this is our map. So those are the items that are before you from CPC. The Board of Selectmen unanimously supported it and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Sanding.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Wanted to thank whoever put together the lovely map that outlined all the parcels that the town has since 2003, thereabouts, when we started CPC. A little background, this has been kind of a long endeavor of buying all these parcels, which has been wonderful for the town. They're lovely parcels. If you've watched them, you know what I'm talking about. I've walked most of them and I'm hoping through the articles that we have before us that everyone has a chance to. Parking is definitely a challenge from ADA compliance, parking, you name it. We've invested considerable sums in the purchase of all these parcels. Again, well done. The town should be commended for setting aside this town for future use. The problem is access. So what this article here before us, number three, seeks to do is address access to these The, I'm going to kind of speak to each one of the three. Sorry, I jumped ahead and lost track there, but the Advisory Committee addressing number three had voted in full, excuse me, voted in the majority to recommend this motion on a four to two vote. I happen to be one of those in favor of it, but I think I should pass on the reasons for some of the concerns on the two negative vote. It was primarily due to the cost. One of the accesses, specifically number two on your map, that green parcel, which is the Crosby Appleton. I won't get into the details. There are many people who can speak to the details as to why, but that, that part of the whole 528 total cost of it, but a considerable sum of that 528 is going towards tackling access onto that parcel. Two members of the committee thought because of that, they thought it was too costly to proceed with the whole. So that was the reason for the four to two vote primarily on a cost piece. They thought it was a little bit too much to spend. My opinion that it is what it is. It does cross over some wetlands and it is a considerable investment to access that parcel. So it will cost more than access and parking on the other three sites, the Bates Lane Complex, which is number one, and the Higgins McAllister, which is number five, and number three, which Selectman Danny mentioned, which is the Damon Complex. Those are a little bit more straightforward, as you see in the write-ups. There aren't quite the access issues that there are on the Crosby Appleton. That's item number three and voted four to two. Article, or subitem number four, which we thought parlayed very well with this, was really promoting those sites for use, signage, et cetera. The amount originally on the warrant, $52,000, was reduced to $38,490. The committee was unanimous in its vote on that and six to zero vote. So we really feel it's necessary to start promoting those in town through the signage and those for everyone to have access to these lovely parcels. Let me backtrack here to items number one and two. So that having to do with the community housing, there's two articles there. Selectman Danny, he kind of gave an overview of the cost, those are attributable to, and again, we have other members here from the Sittitua Housing Authority that can speak to you in more details if there are any questions on the second phase of this project. At the time, we had put this booklet out for print. There were some additional questions we had for the Sittitua Housing Authority, namely some budget issues, some more details on the expenses, a few other questions that we had. We didn't have that information at the time. We had to get this report out to the public. So we didn't have a chance to vote on that. We have since voted earlier this evening. It says supply met with the Sittitua Housing Authority. All the information was provided ahead of time, answered all our questions. The committee voted to recommend approval of both items number one and two on unanimous seven to zero vote. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor. Gentleman at the Center.
My name is Arthur Westney and I live at Central Park. It's a very well-kept building and a absolutely, 49 other elderly and low-income people live there as well. Thanks for Kathy Demasch and Rob Garrick. Our place is in beautiful condition, except for one thing. The last year, I stood in this position and asked for you to approve windows on the first floor. And it's a two-starry building, an old school, which had been renovated, and I now stand here and wish that you would vote affirmatively for windows on the second floor. Thank you.
Lady to my right.
Yes, thank you, Mary O'Gorman, 50 Man Lot Road. I'm just looking at the list of the item three for the Crosby property. So that's 5,100 square feet of wetland replication, so I'm assuming that's 2,600 square feet of wetland filled, two to one ratio. Were any alternatives looked at this? I assume this has not yet gone through conservation or permitting because you're still doing the design, but it seems like a lot of cost. Do we know what percentage of the cost of this $528,500 would be the Crosby property? Because I think I might be interested in the follow-up motion to take that out of this vote.
Selector Danny.
What was represented to us is about $310,000 from the Crosby.
So that's good.
The other items for the Bates Lane, it's approximately $75,000. For Damon Property, it's approximately $66,000. And for the Higgins McAllister, it's approximately $83,000.
May I follow up with a question? Were alternatives looked at for access? Is there any alternative access either through the, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the field there, the Appleton Field, or going through another way that you don't have to fill wetlands? And 200 linear feet of a wetland crossing is quite an expensive undertaking.
I wish there was, but apparently, this is the only way to get into the Appleton Field. And I know that behind you is the, one of the gentlemen was a fervent opponent, so Frank Snow, I believe, might have seen him a little further, but my understanding is this is the only way to get into the Appleton Field and that's the reason why it's as costly to get access to it.
Can I follow up with the motion after that? Thank you.
Gentleman to my right.
Scott Greenbaum, 40, Damon Road. In principle, I don't have any problems with any of these proposals. One thing I'm finding really unusual is this is the first town meeting in the fall that we've dealt with CPC money. It's generally a spring process, and I'm sure that there are many people in town that may not be aware of this. So the first question would be is why have we pushed this into a fall motion when we normally do this in the spring when we have a larger audience or a larger group of people that's just out of order, up normal order, and usually, there's a request at this time for the next set of projects.
To answer your question, Selectman Danny.
Scott, this isn't the first time we've done this. I know that we've done it at two or three locations in the past. We can observe that he's the chair of the CPC to give me specifics of the times we've done it. But to answer your question with respect, why are we going to meet now? Do it the annual? Traditionally, we have done it the annual, but in doing so, we have a number of items. And so instead of having the CPC just sit down from December all the way through to March, we're operating with the works for a year, and if we have a special town meeting, we're going to try to break up some of the work. It doesn't make sense to, why not bring it in fall? Again, it's town meeting. The folks are here to decide whether you want to hold it or not. We could do it all at once, but as we all know, town meeting goes very long in the spring at the annual, and sometimes we find a break in the evening. So this is one way of trying to break up some of the workload that's going to do it all at once. We could do it twice a year if we have a special town meeting. We have a special town meeting as well. It makes sense to maybe bring it forward since this is a project that has been going on for a number of years and a lot of different people have been working on this site, various sites for parking and access. So they thought, why don't we bring it today and bring it this fall?
I have a question about the Appleton, Crosby Appleton Farm. When I was on the Conservation Commission, there was a right-of-way that passed through the people, I believe, who sold the property to us, and I believe this new right-of-way is a new right-of-way that doesn't use the one that we already have. Has there been some, I know there was some conflict with that original one. So what is the status of our original right-of-way onto the Appleton property and why isn't that being used or modified to do this, which I believe would be a much shorter process? And I know Frank would be angry at me for answering, asking these questions.
No, no, they're good questions. Selectman Danny, they're valid, and I think I'm going to make a statement that I'm going to ask Frank correct me if I'm wrong. You're correct that when we purchased the property, there was, I believe, the right-of-way gaining access to the Appleton Field. However, it was revoked or rescinded and taken back, so that one of the town purchased it, we didn't get the right-of-way with it. And so that's been an ongoing issue for a number of years. So by having this access in, we have legitimate legal access to land that the town owns and we're not going over somebody else's right-of-way that we don't have a right to use. And I'll ask Frank if that's correct. That's my name is.
Mr. Snow, to answer your question.
Could I back up just a little bit? Frank Snow, Chairman of the Conservation Commission. Selectman Danny, when the Crosby, when the Appleton Field was purchased, which was sometime before the Crosby piece, there was no direct frontage on Platte Road. And so there was a cart path or right-of-way that accessed the Appleton Field. And that was in effect, to get to that, but it was a very narrow road, maybe 10 feet wide, and it passed almost under the window of one of the houses that were on that drive out, right adjacent to it. The folks that owned that house actually created a new right-of-way to keep that near against their house. When the town acquired the Crosby piece of property, they made an agreement with the Crosby family that they, the town would relinquish its rights to a cart path that accessed Appleton and that the town would create a new way to go into the Crosby piece. The frontage that the town acquired with that is, has weapon marked, and there was no other way to do that. The Crosby's kept enough in to access their own house. If you went to look at their right-of-way, for folks that are familiar with that, our access would be about 60 feet east of their driveway, not very far away. But unfortunately, there is a piece of weapons, and the Conservation Commission is very concerned about weapons and crossing weapons, disturbing weapons, but will follow the same guidelines that are required or even more stringent without the correct type of drainage, replication pieces, and will actually hopefully use that to explain to people how some of this has been. And we'll actually hopefully use that to explain to people how some of this is done. So, in acquiring those large pieces, that was an arrangement that was made by the town at that time, and the public was worthwhile to do that. And that's why we're here now to get the proper access into that parcel. Scott, you're still to my right.
Yeah, I think that explains it, obviously. I'm not all the way up to date on all the information. Overall, I support the ideas of having access to properties that we own and to renovate the windows. Thanks.
Gentleman to my right. Sorry.
We turn to 21 Hurley Lane. My first question has to do with why CPC funds need to be used in the central housing. Last year, money was approved into Phase One for about, I think, $130,000. These, this amount here is close to $300,000. There was also a coukla that was replaced or is being replaced at the central housing. My question is why? That seems to me to be maintenance issues. And why that was in barned? Those things totaled about $1 million. They have a useful life of probably 20 to 30 years. And why is that taken out of CPC funds? I know there's a component in the housing, but here we've spent $1 million in having to create one additional unit of housing. That's my question.
As represented by the Housing Authority and the CPC, it is available to use CPC funds for the use that they're seeking. The rationale, I again, I'll defer to the chair of the Situate Housing Authority, but my understanding is, is that these are things that are needed for the seniors, and many of which are probably qualified for housing affordable. And so, this is one way that CPC to be able to fund it, is otherwise, yes, you're right. We as a town or the Housing Authority would then have to seek alternative measures to be able to pay for it. So, they sought to get funding from the CPC. CPC said it's permissible to, yes. Given the fact that they are, shall we say, through the first phase, almost completed, it might be wise to complete it so that at least the rooms are done. Other than that, I certainly would defer to the chairman, Steve Polter, to answer further if you'd like. Did you have another question, sir?
On the parking lots, I assume that the snow will be removed. I'm just curious on which one of this budget is snow removed in low maintenance, low, uh, gearing budget for next year. And my other question is, there's a total of 53 parking spaces. I'm wondering how that panel was wired and why, what I did. Were the, were the background information team to say that you think there'd be 53 people on 53 cars at any one time using this parking lot?
Um, it's a question, Selector Danny. They're not picked out of the air. It feels reassuring. There is an engineer who actually went through and took a look exactly at all four locations. And they determined, based on the access of how many spaces they're going to have under the Architectural Access Board, there's a CMR, I think it's 521, and I think it's 24 or a second section, that basically dictates that for every space you have, you have to have so many spaces for accessibility, the handicap spot. And in some circumstances, if you have a larger number, you gotta make sure that you also have a van accessibility. So, those spaces, those numbers are not picked out of the air, as you said. They're not just a town deciding. They're mandated by both state and federal regulations. And it's the same thing with any parking area. You know, when you begin to do something, it has to be accessible. And those costs are expensive, and you begin to have to make sure the grades are right because there's an added cost to ensure that they're at 5% max. Or for other reasons, make sure that you have a flat plateau, be able to park your vehicle, be able to have wheelchairs, or if you have a locker, to be able to pull up those grades. My understanding is that there also have picnic areas. And two of these areas are going to have an accessible trail. Now, I'm sure many people in wheelchairs are not going to be able to hike all over the various properties that the town's bought the past 15 years. But at least there are going to be two trails that will be accessible for these people, the people in general, not just people with disabilities, other people who might not be able to go out to the woods, be able to walk on those trails that will be accessible.
Lady to my right.
Jean Shelton, 51 Heatherley Road. This is a follow-up on the conservation properties and the access roads and parking lots. It might be a bit of a repeat. I'm not that familiar with the, with the properties and where they get access to the main roads and where am I familiar with? Well, just it's a little bit unclear on the map. I'm wondering, in addition to the cost, especially with the Appleton Crosby parcel, it looks like you're really parking into a lot of the conservation land you're trying to protect when you have a parking lot so far away from the main road. Why can't the parking lot be right off the platform with it then being a trail rather than a road from platform way into the interior like that? Thanks.
Selector Danny. Could I defer to, Mr. Snow, because he was the applicant, of course, to answer your question, Mr. Snow.
Thank you. The location of parking lots took a lot of looking at. We got to the Crosby piece. It is the right-of-way road that goes in there on that particular computer and repeat. But what we wanted was that parking and access to be near the Appleton Field. It's a cleared area. Up until we relinquished that access, there was a farmer, organic farmer working that field, who would look again to have some farming take place on that field. If the road doesn't go all the way in there, you can't get equipment, people, things like that up to the field. So, that was the rationale to, to put that road and parking all the way in there. It also gets people sort of into the core of the property. But that's the main reason for putting that so far back is that the Appleton Field can be accessed. At some point, that may very well be part of the community guidance, depending on how it gets developed. So, it took a lot of work to figure out just where we put that, but that was the location for that. On Bates Lane, we picked a spot that was already partially cleared. So, it's partly on Bates Lane. It's not all the way into the woods, but it gets us in ways, and then we can continue on Bates Lane. Selectman Danny said with an accessible path so that folks can, that aren't able to hike over a trail, could easily walk into a grove, perhaps some picnic areas at that location, at those locations as well. So, this is more than just a simple parking space. It's a, it's a whole series of amenities. There's gates so that we can close these off at night and hopefully reduce vandalism. There's a number of pieces that go with this. But that's the reason to get those in there. We thought a lot about how much we have to do to clear or to open up. And most of these pieces, with the exception of Crosby, are all off of existing sort of paths or trails, car paths, if you will. So, we don't have to do a lot of extra clearing, but unfortunately, to get to the Crosby piece, that was a necessity.
Before I recognize the lady to my left, I just want to let the meeting know that, because we have a lot of questions on the different items, I am going to divide the questions when we come to a vote. And what I'll do at that time is ask you to return to page seven in your advisory committee. And at the bottom of the page, you'll see items one through four. So, when we actually go to vote, you'll say number one, I'm in favor, opposed, and the two, I'm not in favor, opposed. So, we'll handle them now. Lady to my right.
That was the active my question. Allison Thor, 129 Bray Street, just answered my question. I also have a statement. As far as the wooden kiosks and trail maps with the very active Boy Scout troopers in Situate, that that would be great eagleship. Other than, not much for savings, but there's a saving in that, and we have eagleshows that can fulfill their properties. But thank you for answering my question.
Lady to my right.
Nancy Decoast, 22 Bell Tower Lane. And I'd like to start out by saying that I think the Community Preservation Commission has done a really nice job over the last, as you said, Selectman Danny, 15 or so years with these pieces of property. It's been very well thought out. I have a, I guess it would be a two-point, two-part clarification. And Selectman Danny, you had mentioned, you verbally mentioned a breakdown of how much each of these were going to cost. And it was in reference to point number three under this article. And I was wondering, since I didn't capture them, does that add up to the $528,500 that is referenced there at point number three? And my second question would be, it was commented that article number four, point number four, is listed as $52,000, and that it was later determined to be, it was only $38,490. Are we voting on number four as $52,000 or as the amended amount on the handout, $38,490?
Selector Danny. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll take the last one first, if that's okay. It's $32,000, or $38,490. Initially, when they first came over, it was, they estimated to be about $52,000, and said, let's send it right by. And then we backed and said, we figured it'd be $38,000. With respect to the numbers, I could just may for a second. If I could, Mr. Moderator, if I could ask the chairman or the CPC to give an exact breakdown of the numbers, can I hear them? Chairman, Karen.
Which numbers are you talking about?
The access parking, this, this space of these.
The numbers add up.
Do you know what they, do you have?
The individual. Okay, just a second. Actually, I don't have those numbers. Honey, do we have, it should be in the booklet.
It's not. Just a second.
Lifeline?
So, the Damon Property is $66,000. Bates Lane is $82,500. The Crosby Property is $310,000. And the Eagle's Valley is $70,000, which is $508,500.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, my good counsel.
Mr. Gentleman to my right. That's you, Jim. Oh, you're the gentleman in the center who's had his microphone before. Okay, gentleman at the center.
Okay, my name is Richard McAllister. I live in 22 Hollycrest Road. And I would like to discuss the McAllister Higgins access. I notice you have a 400-foot approachway on plan here, which is 1,000 feet from Boothill Road. The other 600 feet is known as Hollycrest Way, which is a private lane, a dirt road that's not approved by the town, and it's maintained by me. I'm asking the town if they have any intentions of providing some road support, fill, grading of Hollycrest Road when they add this parking lot back into the, in the reserve.
Selector Danny. Mr. McAllister, as you know, this is property that I think is named after your family. So, the town has a right to get to that property. It may not be a public way, a public road, but clearly the town has a right to gain access. Like anything, if there's a need to be able to get to the back acre there, the parking lot, I don't see why the town wouldn't ensure that it is allowed to be able to utilize material to get there. I don't know your legal rights to maintain it or what the town's legal rights are, but if, if for some reason the town isn't able to get to its parcel, then the town would have every right to be able to go over and plane it, shall we say, rate it, fill it, and order to gain access. So, I'm not sure if that answers your question, but like I said, whatever the legal rights are to maintain it, if the town has the obligation, it will. If for some reason something happened, the town couldn't gain access, I can't see why the town wouldn't, because as a selectman, I could say, we have a right to get there because the town owns the land and the public has a right to get there. So, if they're just putting material down, then yes, indeed, I would expect the DVW to go out there and put some material so that everybody here could gain access to it because everybody here owns it.
Okay. Well, I clearly think that, you know, the potholes and everything that, that happened because of traffic going up and down the road, the town will make some effort to keep that in grade. I'm speaking of Hollycrest Road.
You're gonna make some effort, John? All I, all I could say, Mr. McAllister, is though, I can't speculate what's gonna happen in the future, other than saying that the road is un-travable, you can't travel down it, and the town should be able to gain its access to get to town on land. And if it means putting down some stone or some fill, town will have to do it, only because everybody here has a right to gain access to it because the town owns it. Again, I don't know what the legal rights are. When you sold the land to the town, I don't know whether you retain the ownership and, shall we say, the control of maintaining it. I don't know, frankly, I don't think the town has it, but if the town does, then the town will. Bottom line here is gaining access for the public, and the public has a right to gain access to its land. And yes, we will ensure that the public, everybody here, is able to gain access, especially if there's a parking lot up there for people to go.
Okay. Just wanted to raise a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hatch, you want to take another shot at it?
James on 66 Main Road. I have two questions. First question, I'm struck by Frank's statement that this is no simple project. There are several gates with moving parts, there are several wooden kiosks containing maps. We will have those over time. The question is, has a, an annual maintenance cost been projected? Has that cost been included in the upcoming budget? And who will perform that annual maintenance?
Mr. Moderator. First, I'd like to defer that to Frank, because obviously they're the applicant and everyone's who will point before the boards and answer a lot of these questions. Give him the first light of that apple.
Mr. Snow, to answer your question.
So, the, we're hoping to make these as maintenance-free, long-term pieces as possible if we do any type of things. I'm sure that over time, some maintenance will be required, and we may be looking to dispose of some funds at that time. I'm always asking for more money for the conservation. I'm always asking for more money from the Conservation Commission. We'll find a way to take care of some of those through the process of doing the trail work and windup. We've also started to foster a wonderful group of volunteers to do trail work and things like that, and we're looking for those folks to help out as well. So it'll be a combination of those things.
Your second question, Mr.?
I comment on the response. I take the answer to be no, but a good faith effort will be made to correct that. Second question with regard to Central Park, uh, cent, former Central School. Who actually holds the title to that property? Who has the power of conveyance of that property?
Chairman of the Housing Authority, Mr. Stephen Court.
The, um, Centurion Housing Authority owns that building and has title to that.
Would, would town meeting approval be required should that property be, uh, should you want to convey that property in the future? Or would you have the sole authority to do that?
Well, the, the, the property, because it is controlled or it's overseen by HUD, anything that is to be done with that, even though it is controlled by the Centurion Housing Authority, would need approval by HUD, um, if we were to, for any reason, want to sample property.
So does, does situat town meeting, do we have a vested interest in that property, other than we are, or will be residents there somewhere or later?
No, the, the Central Park property, as well as Wheeler and Lincoln Park, are owned by the Centurion Housing Authority, not the town itself.
Thank you. Gentlemen to my left. Yes, Paul Barrett, 14 Michelab. I can't help but notice that on each of these CPC issues, there's a DCR access gate that's included. And I'm wondering, what restrictions that places on it? What rights DCR suddenly has over a town-owned property? Does that mean that on state holidays, we won't be able to access these properties? Why is there this DCR gate? Defer to the, uh, Mr. Snow, come on down.
We discussed the term DCR, they're similar to the ones that DCR uses with their property. DCR has nothing to do with these properties, it's just the same type of gates that they use on there.
So Frank is gonna be open on Lunker Hill Day and...
It would, it'll, it'll...
Southern County holidays.
In all the meetings that we've had with different towns, where it's one of those from the police department talking about how we keep bidless and minimum, and other things to do would be if we'll close these, uh, say, desk to, uh, technical. So that's what we're looking to do. Other than that, we want it open and used as much as possible.
Sir. Hello, sir.
Hello. Ernie Foster, 109 Clap Road. I decided to get up and speak on behalf of many of the volunteers that have been maintaining all the trails as of now. I'm a little concerned the way this is gonna go for a vote. I strongly recommend that we approve the Crosby parcel. Folks know the Driftway, but you don't know that Appleton Barn. For us who are out in the West End, who like to farm, hike, all that, uh, access to it is crucial. And it doesn't show on the map, the town land also associated with this. So I know there's other people who've taken on every hat, um, a lot of workers coming to this.
Lady to my right.
Diane Loiseau, 20, Richeloe Road. I ha, I would like to approve this, but I would have some questions. Again, the gentleman up front said, why are we doing this at this town meeting, a special town meeting, when it could have been done during a regular town meeting? I don't see the urgency to have it done immediately. Also question, why are we doing it all at once? Can we do one or two at a time? And the expensive one, which seems excessive to me, is a lot of money. And many of us are on fixed income. I love trails, I'd like to do that, I'm all in favor of community preservation, trails around the town, I'm happy we can purchase the land. But I question, why are we doing this now? And why are we doing all four at once? Why can't we do it separately? And I thought Mr. Tardy had a good point about the bond issue, but I certainly think we need to finish the windows on Central Park. Uh, I can see that being an issue because winter's coming, but these trails could be done in the spring, they could be done in the fall, they could be thought out better where we would be presented with the actual numbers for each one in this printed thing instead of questioning, finding out who actually has the numbers. So while I would support the idea, but I think we're premature setting it up tonight.
Let me answer your second question. We're not gonna do them all at once. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask for a vote on each of the four items separately. So if you wanna tackle it on a buffet basis, you can do that. You can have the Swiss cheese, but you can pass on the crackers. Uh, lady to my right.
Marlini, or 29 Christopher Lane. Um, I've been active with the Trails Project for a couple of years now, and I have answers to some of the questions that have been raised. First of all, I would like to remind the meeting that we, in Article Five, did a reconciliation of monies that had been voted previously in other years for the town property. A lot of that money was to be earmarked for parking, for kiosks. The intent of having the two articles, the first, the reconciliation, and then the CPC articles for parking, was that, uh, of the parking areas for some of these areas, some of the cost is greater than the money left over in the account, and some, the money, it would not be there to pay for the whole thing. So in reconciling all of those, we can address parking as a unit. And if one property ends up costing less and, and one property ends up costing more, then the money can be shared among the parking areas. So I would remind the meeting that even though the price says $528,000, we already have $273,000 that was voted to be reconciled at this meeting that will go towards that. That was the whole purpose of doing this together. Also, uh, I was involved with the number four, the trail mapping. This is not just clearing trails. We are going to map it virtually using GIS, GPS, um, technology. We're going to end up with maps that are going to be overlaid with the town maps and included on the town website. It can be downloaded to your computer, put onto your phone. It's also going to be connected with all of the other interesting South Shore Trails Networks, lots of different websites that contain trails in other communities, so people from other towns can come and walk our trails, come to our restaurants, shop in our stores after they finish walking, like we do when we go to Hanover, Washfield, other places where we walk. This money also will pay for signage, so that people know where they are, so that when they walk, they feel safe, that they know where they're, where they are. And also, the Higgins and Ballister property, I walked it just this morning, there's a magnificently beautiful, um, stream that runs through it, and we need a bridge to cross that. I kind of cobbled my way over rocks today to cross that stream. Most people don't wanna do that, we need a bridge. That br, money for the bridge is included in this article. So I would hope that you would support both three and four, parking and the mapping. We have owned the Crosby land since 2011, and none of us have been had, have been able to have access to it. I think it's about time that our community and our citizens have access to the lands that we've spent millions of dollars on. Thank you.
Oh, you were, you were next.
Larry Howes, Wallon Road, move the question. The group, is there a second? Uh, the, requires a two-thirds vote to terminate debate. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So voted and declared passed by eight-thirds vote. Now, as I said, what I'm going to do is call these off individually. So if you turn back over to page seven of your advisory committee booklet, towards the bottom, you'll see the four projects. There's one difference. On item number four, the motion was for a lower dollar amount. In the booklet, it says $52,000. The motion that Select and Dan had made calls for $38,490. So when I call item four, you won't be voting on 52, you'll be voting on 38. So, let's go. These all require majority vote. All those in favor of item number one, and I'll just describe it, Community Housing, Central Park Housing Window Replacement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted, declared approved by a majority vote. Item number two, $79,850.50 from Unreserved Fund, Central Park Housing Window Replacement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Item number three, $528,500 from Open Space Parking and Access to CPC Acquire Land. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
So voted and declared a majority vote. Any seven people who challenge my determination, you may rise now. No one is standing, vote. Finally, number four, $38,490 from Open Space Mapping Trails and Signage for CPC in Town. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. That concludes business on Article Six. Article seven, on the motions, Select and Dan.
Thank you. Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the treasurer to borrow with the approval of the board's electing pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, or any other applicable law, $500,000, in a form of a low-interest loan from the Commonwealth Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, the MNC Wall Loan Fund, to fund the replacement of a portion of the C-Wall at Oceanside Drive.
Move, is there a second? Again, seconded discussion, Select and Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, ladies and gentlemen, we're in the process of completing two phases of C-Walls on Oceanside Drive. In that process, um, we have run out and we've obtained grants, uh, from the Commonwealth and bonded other portions of it. In addition to that, we received from this Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, a low, a low-interest loan, $500,000. We'd like to utilize that, because it's cheaper to utilize that based on the interest rate than it is to include through bonding. In addition, the reason why we're asking on Oceanside Drive is that one of the residents who lives on Oceanside Drive asked to see if they could be included as a part of the C-Wall project. Now, this individual, this, this family, if you will, originally was a series of homes that we were originally gonna start with on Oceanside Drive. But due to the fact that some of the residents were not receptive or open to granting the town easements, uh, where the wall was going, we opted to go further down Oceanside in one direction and up the other. But those residents did give easements to be able to give to the public to gain access on the water side, as well as to gain access to buildings, uh, and to maintain them forward. So, one resident had asked, could I also be included? Because we had all the material, we had all the labor down there and the equipment. And so they came to the board, and of course, the board is very receptive and also encouraging adding our C-Wall protection, for short, protection. And so we thought it would be wise to be able to include this, this one residence. And so, uh, the effort of trying to further extend the C-Wall to try and accomplish more C-Wall, um, throughout situat, we thought it would be wise to do it at this time, because it would be cost-effective. So that's what this article's about. Thank you. From the advisory committee, Mr. Anthony Intmelt.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article said, there are two sections of C-Wall being reconstructed on Oceanside Drive. Uh, the first section is from 75 to 68 Oceanside, and this section is about 95% complete. This, the, uh, other section is from 115 to Kennesaw, in which it's at 90% complete. And, um, uh, what we have here is that this, the C-Wall reconstruction includes some total wall reconstruction, as well as other areas, uh, what they're doing is what's called encapsulation. What they're doing is that, is that they're, they're building on top of the wall, in the form, it makes the wall wider, thicker, and stronger. It's a very excellent, uh, project. This is being done by Mr. Cafferty of the DPW Engineering. Now, this project also includes some stone, uh, revamp in front of the wall, total wall, to keep the, the, the waves from beating on the wall. The energy, the wave dissipates in, in the stones and slows it down and, and cuts out the energy. Uh, the last time that, uh, the town did any work on those C-Walls was after the 1978 storm. And at that time, it was a federally funded disaster recovery program. And unbelievable, uh, one of the clients of that program is that you, you can only replace and cut, believe in the law, you couldn't build new walls, you couldn't even repair existing ones. So, uh, this, this project's being done by Mr. Cafferty, uh, he's the DPW Engineering Supervisor. And, uh, also, if you need any further questions, you ask him, or you ask Nancy Holt, the, uh, the town, um, Finance Director. Thank you, Gravich.
Nancy, you were the DPW Director back, back last time. Uh, discussion from the floor. There being no one at the mic's approval, oh, this motion requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared a two-thirds vote. Any seven people who challenge my determination, you may rise now. No one is standing in Article Eight. Mr. Dan. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Before I say the motion, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Um, without you guys, town government simply just does not work. So thanks for taking your evening to come out here and help us. Um, my motion is, I move the town vote to supplement inch prior bills of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects, provided in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, premium received by the town on the sale of any bonds or notes they're, they render, lest such premium apply to the payment of the cost of the issuing of such bonds or notes. They be applied to pay project costs and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project should be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied. I move seconded discussion, Select and Dan. So what exactly does that mean? Um, okay. So here's what happens. We have a capital project and we go out and borrow $2 million to get a new fire truck, fix a school roof, and repair C-Wall. We go to a company and we get a bond for that, so they lend us the money. Sometimes the coupon rate on a bond doesn't exactly match what our rate of interest should be, so it's a 3% interest on a bond and we should be getting 2.8%. These companies then give us money, which is a premium in the form of a check. In the past, we've been able to get these checks and we put it in the general fund, or local receipts, and we could use that money for whatever we wanted. So for the most part, it went to other capital plans, or it went to free cash, or it went to stabilization fund. Now, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts changed the law at the end of last year that said, all this money that you get in the, in the form of a premium, has to go to the project that you're actually borrowing the money for. So that money cannot be spent on a different project, that's being paid for the fire truck, the C-Wall, and repairing the roof of the school. In layman's terms, that's what it is. This is also only for, um, non-debt exclusion articles.
This is also only for non-debt exclusion articles. Debt exclusion articles had to be done this time all the way. So it hasn't been a ton of money over the years, but it can be significant.
Selecton voted unanimously in support of this, Mark Carter. From the advisory committee, Mr. Sean Lewis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I think that was a pretty good job finding that. And I read that I had to really like ten times to actually make any sense of that. I tried to break it down myself, and essentially, most states right now are going through modernization, and most of that comes in forms of redoing legislation. One of the things that the state of Massachusetts did to try to become more efficient was to pass the municipal modernization law. Essentially, that is going to require the town to apply premiums to course our own debt to either finance projects as well as to pay down principal of that bond. But they have to do that when that premium is issued. So they're just trying to streamline that, and that's kind of exactly what we said. The advisory committee recommended approval of this article unanimously. Thank you.
There being no one at the mic's, approval of this article requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article nine, Selecton Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town amend the general bylaws of the town under the Waterways at Section thirty-one, zero, zero, zero by replacing the current section as called. Whoever violates any provision of this chapter, any rule or regulation adopted under Section three, zero, nine, two, zero, C, hereof, or any applicable general law or federal law or regulation thereunder, and whoever fails to obey the lawful and reasonable orders of the harbor master or resist the harbor master in execution of the harbor master duties, shall be fined one hundred dollars and/or may have the mooring dockage or commercial privileges revoked. This chapter shall be enforced by the harbor master or the harbor master's visiting guests.
Move, is there a second? Again, seconded, discussion, Selecton Dan.
Thank you. Okay, so for this one, basically, we're just adding this to our bylaw. Currently, this exists, but it's under the state guidelines. So when somebody violates one of the rules of the harbor master's office, the state then gets the fining privileges and they go and fine whoever's violated the thing a hundred dollars, and the state collects the money. What we're doing now is we're taking this and putting it under our bylaws so that we're in charge of that process. There's two benefits to that. The first one is the harbor master's office can be a little bit more lenient with our residents. So if you get a bill when you're at the beach and you put it in your bathing suit and you forget about it and the twenty-one days go by, if it's with the state, you already have penalties and whatnot. Whereas here, the harbor master can call you up and say, hey, you got a bill. Did you forget about it? Please pay it and come down to pay it. If they don't, then the harbor master always has the ability to send it to the state and can go to the moon and charge us. The other benefit of this is the town gets all the money. Right now, when we go through the state, the state gets half the money and we get half the money. So those are the two reasons why we're trying to put this in our bylaw.
And the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously in support of this article. From the advisory committee, Mr. Jerry Kell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In full disclosure, my brother is a member of the Waterways Commission and we have had no discussion on this item. I think Tony just did a great job summarizing this. This article allows for a kinder, gentler Steve-O as harbor master. It allows for issues to be settled in a civil setting rather than the ham-handed issuance of citations. So there is a twofold benefit. There is a rational way of treating these violations and there's the increase in revenue to the town. This has been very successfully implemented by the towns of Chatham and Mashpee, and the advisory committee voted unanimously to recommend this. Thank you.
Discussion from the floor, Lady to my left.
Janie Culver, two eighty-four Countryway. I just have a question. I really appreciate the aspect that this brings it back to make it more civilized and so forth. But I'm just a little bit confused when it talks about failing to obey in reasonable orders or resist the harbor master in the execution of his duties. Might mean that the mooring is revoked. Could you help me understand what is the process? Because I'm kind of picturing if somebody said to the harbor master, I really disagree that this is a reasonable order. I mean, could he then have this mooring revoked or what's the process?
That's an interesting question. I just will point out that that language right now was already in the bylaw, so... But yeah.
I mean, just to elaborate on what the moderator said, the language in terms of the penalties and all that is currently what exists. All that exists is that it's being put in our bylaws. So whatever the process was before for any discrepancies will be the same.
Further discussion. There being no one else at the mic's approval of this motion would require a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article ten, on motion, Selecton Karen McKenney. Selecton McKenney.
Thank you, everybody. I'm very excited to be here for my first town meeting, so let's see how I do on this. I move that the town accept Mass General Law Chapter forty, Section three to establish revolving funds for the rental of town and school buildings and to further allow those funds to carry forward to the following fiscal year.
Moves and seconded discussion, Selecton McKenney.
This article will allow us to set aside the rental income from town and school buildings, and specifically, we are now renting out the former Gates Gym. And this will allow us to put those funds aside to maintain those facilities. The board unanimously supports this and I recommend it to be.
From the advisory committee, Ms. Patrice Miller.
Okay, thank you. I've got to say exactly the same thing. Option is clear, allow the town to collect revenue from the rental of buildings such as the old Gates School Gym and place them in a revolving fund where, and then they can be used to directly support the maintenance of those rental areas.
All right. Speakers from the floor, gentlemen. To my left. Ted Seig, got you.
Thank you. Richard Heebin, twenty-one Walnut Avenue. Point of clarification, there already exists accounts for school rentals, property. How does this impact that?
Yes, the general bylaw has never been accepted by town meeting. So this is to clarify and put it into our bylaws. Okay, a local, I'm sorry, the language I'm conferring with our esteemed finance director, the local option acceptance, there are revolving funds, yes, but the local exception has not been admitted into our bylaws. Is that accurate?
Basically, you know, that sounds all good, but can we just cut to the chase, basically? The school building's still under the jurisdiction of the school?
Oh, yes, this has to do with the rental of public buildings. So we're going to be renting out the old gym at the old Gates Gym, and those funds are going to be put into this revolving fund in order to maintain that particular facility.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy, to put this in delicately, does this mean that we have the funds, but now we're actually tidying it up by doing what we had to do first? All right, very good. Gentlemen to my right.
Beantuck on Twenty-sixth Clap Road. I think this is a grand idea. Is this a collective of all rental town buildings? Do they all go into one fund? Or is the fund for the gym going to be just used there? And if we were to rent a building, a high school for a function, does that then set up a high school fund? Or is it all going to one collective?
That's a very good question. Before I give you what I think is the answer, I'm going to make sure I give you mine. I confirm that this is for any facility that we would use it for. But right now, it's only for the gym because that's the only thing we'll be charging the revolving funds for.
Lady to my right.
Anne Rhybey, Tenpenny Road. My question is, if the town is situated, whether it's the selectmen, the council on aging, the planning board, if we choose to use a finance facility, will we do charge a rent?
Yeah, so Anne, thank you. That's a question's a little outside of the revolving fund. Whether or not they're going to charge individuals would have to be whomever is responsible for renting out the facility. I don't know the answer to. Are you asking if somebody wants to use this facility?
If a private individual wants to have a play here, certainly they would pay to have a play here. But if the town itself wants to utilize this building, whether it's here or the library, this is something that we have paid a tremendous, and maybe I'm out of the four quarters of the article, but you know, you all brought it up with this revolving fund. Why would we, as taxpayers, have to pay to use our own buildings?
If I may, you set the four points in the article and that's when my antennae go up. I'm lucky enough to kind of eavesdrop on all the conversation going on up here. So I think I may have the answer. The question of whether you, or me, Anne, or anyone else would be charged to use a particular facility would depend on the board that had custody of the facility. If those boards chose to charge for the facility, this is the fund where the money would go. So this authorizes the fund. It doesn't pertain to whether or not anyone gets charged or how much.
Well, then, point of clarification. In other words, if the council on aging or if the planning board had a very large public hearing and we chose to have it here, would the school department then charge us to use it?
I think you'd have to ask the school department.
I'm asking the school department.
They're saying yes.
Excuse me, they're saying yes?
Okay. Mr. Heebin will clarify, and then we're not going to pursue this line of inquiry further because it doesn't pertain to the subject matter of the article. Mr. Heebin.
There are different tiers. Public groups, depending upon which tier they're on, wouldn't pay for the actual rental. They may have to pay for custodians, do this, or things like that. But they don't actually pay for the building. Depending upon which tier, if the police scouts wanted to use this, they wouldn't pay for the building. You know, they would pay just with custodians. Or if they were going to use the screen, they might have to pay for the person to rent the booth. But if you're a private organization, you know, a dance recital, obviously, there's a pay.
Mr. Moderator, I understand exactly what Mr. Heebin is saying. Whether I agree, I disagree with the public using the space and you charge it.
Any other questions on the article? There being no one at the mic's, approval of this article will require a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted and declared unanimous. Article eleven, on motion, Selecton Dan.
Mr. Moderator, I move IP article eleven.
Is there a second? For those of you not familiar with terminology, IP is a death penalty. Discussion, Selecton Dan.
Just a quick discussion. At our last meeting last Tuesday, we decided on the land that we're going to use for this property, and we're kind of doing our due diligence on it now as to whether we become the legal examiner.
From the advisory committee, Mr. Jerry Kell.
The advisory committee did not vote on this because a decision was made to definitely postpone consideration.
Discussion from the floor. Gentlemen to my right.
Welcome, Fifty-Mile Road. A lot of this concerns the Ellis property and the town put press releases and material from the Attorney General up on their site regarding this. There were some discrepancies, it seems, between the Attorney General and the town release, and I was wondering if I could get some clarification. In the town release, it says, "Has agreed to place conservation restriction on remaining Ellis estate not currently under the care and control of the school committee." However, the material from the Attorney General, Section two, says that all Ellis Conservation Commission property, currently totaling seventy-five point eight-six acres, would be, the intention would be to put it into conservation. So I'm wondering if there is material or land that is not part of the safety complex that is, what used to be part of the Ellis estate, that's not included in consideration for conservation? What is the land that's under the care and control of the school committee? Not part of the safety complex? Specifically, I'm wondering, there's all that contiguous land of Ellis estate that it seems the Attorney General is intending to have put into conservation. And yet, the town is qualifying it without specifics. What land is not part of the safety complex? What land wouldn't be put into conservation?
Could you blow a question down to town?
Yeah, the Ellis estate property had a chunk taken from the safety complex. Is all of the remainder of that land to be put into conservation according to the Attorney General's letter? Or are you excluding some?
To answer the question, Selecton Dan.
I'll try. So, the other land that was not given to the school committee way back when, is that going to be in the conservation? The answer is yes.
What land is that?
The Ellis estate? That's your question, right?
Yes. But your press release from the Board of Selectmen says, "The town has agreed to place the conservation restriction on the remaining Ellis estate not currently under the care and control of the school committee." And yet, the Attorney General's letter says nothing about care and control of the school. What land is that referring to?
I can't answer the question. All I can tell you is that the land other than the one that was given to the school committee is going to have CR one.
That was our Ellis estate.
You may deem the answer acceptable or unacceptable, but that's the answer. Did you have another question, Mr.?
Can we have some mechanism to include in this article eleven if it's going forward? That all land except for the safety complex would be put into conservation?
No, sir, not tonight. The article, as it was drafted and put on the warrant, was to designate certain unidentified... certain unidentified presently-owned town property for conservation purposes. The motion before the body is to indefinitely postpone action on this article. The explanation, as I heard it, was that the Selectmen are reviewing certain properties but haven't yet reached conclusions as to which properties they would bring before this meeting. Have I stated that accurately? All right, so the boards and audience, and I think I summarized their positions. So technically, to be within the scope of the article, which is what our debate should be limited to, it would pertain directly to this article, not press releases. One says this.
Well, it's all relating to the Ellis estate.
Yeah, but you know, we're dealing with the article, not the more global issue of the Ellis estate.
Well, it refers to the enforcement letter, and that's what I'm referring to.
You may inquire. Gentlemen, to my right.
James Hunt, Fifty-Minute Road. An observation of the original twenty acres, which were passed by town meeting to the school committee back in the seventies. Seven point one of those were transferred by town meeting to the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of building the Public Safety Center, leaving approximately thirteen point nine acres, still in the care and custody and control of the school committee. I believe that is the parcel in question. Mr. Wong, the chairman of the school committee, has graciously granted us time on the agenda, the school committee agenda next Monday, to make a presentation with respect to that land. Some members here may remember that a year ago this month, this town meeting voted to transfer that land, those thirteen, at the time of the fourteen acres, back to conservation. That process was incomplete, because the school committee has not yet voted to declare that a meaning parcel surplus. That's the answer, I believe, that Mr. Wong is looking for. My observation here is, I'm really disappointed that this has to be indefinitely postponed two years after the fact. An awful lot of time has gone, a lot of water under the bridge, a lot of opportunity to make this right. My observation, I'm very disappointed, and I trust that in the spring, this process will be complete once and for all.
Further discussion. There being none, the motion to indefinitely postpone action requires a majority vote. All those in favor of indefinite postponement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Passes by a majority. Article... And this is the last article on the warrant. Karen, I guess we're going out on a high here.
I move that the town amend the general bylaws by adding a new section, three zero one nine zero S. follows. Public consumption of marijuana or tetrahydrocannabinol, T H C. No person shall consume marijuana or tetrahydrocannabinol, T H C, as defined Master General Law, Section ninety-four C, Section one, as amended, while upon any property owned by, under the control of, or maintained by the town's constituent, including, but not limited to, streets, sidewalks, public ways, footways, passageways, stairs, bridges, parks, playgrounds, recreation areas, folk landings, public buildings, schoolhouses, school grounds, cemeteries, parking lots, beaches, and sand spits. This bylaw may be enforced pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter forty, Section twenty-one, and Section twenty-one D, and punishable by a fine of three hundred dollars for each offense.
Move and seconded discussion. Selectme Kent.
This article seeks to prohibit public consumption of marijuana, T H C, in public spaces. It would mirror our current town law prohibiting public consumption of alcoholic beverages. The voters have spoken in the Commonwealth. It is now legal to possess certain amounts of marijuana and these products. This bylaw would prohibit the consumption in our town. The language in this article was established by the Department of Public Health, and has been adopted by other oceanfront communities, including Rushfield. It was unanimously supported by the Board of Selectmen, and we urge this...
From the Advisory Committee, Mr. Lincoln.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory Committee voted unanimously to approve and support of this article. This language was requested by Police Chief Stewart, and in order to deal with some fallout from the passage last year of legalization of curating marijuana, may we give this article some enforcement?
This part gets interesting, because in the beginning, they said identify yourself, and you get up and speak, cameras are rolling, so who wants to talk? There being no one at the mics, approval of this motion requires a majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted and declared unanimous. For, I accept the motion adjourned. Number one, I want to thank you all very much, and thank you for your tolerance with some of the glitches as we got used to the new room. I hope it was comfortable. I want to thank Emily McCarthy, who worked on the sound, Bill Richter, who facilitated the use of this facility, Madam Towne McFarlane, and her staff, who work much harder than I think any people will ever appreciate to set this up, and all the workers and volunteers who participated in this event. Could you give them a round of applause? I accept the motion adjourned. Move, seconded, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So voted, declared unanimous, this meeting stands. Adjourn.